We'll call the meeting to our police stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Evening all, Tom took the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Present.
Kelly. Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin. Fisher.
Present.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. I'd like to welcome Cindy Stahl too as our honorary council member for the next three months. Cindy, welcome. Any, any opening comments or introductions you want to do for yourself?
Yeah.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Item number one, the adoption of the agenda, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number two, a motion approving our minutes from our November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, nothing under recognitions and awards. Item number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public hearings, item number five is a resolution reviewing a tax payment application from Bigelow and Lennon Construction. Craig.
Thank you, mayor members. This is for a property at thirteen oh two Seventeenth Street Northeast. Estimated value at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is in the Nature's Ridge subdivision. Application is in conformance with our adopted policy, and this is a public hearing.
Is there anybody here from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing none, seeing none. Counsel, any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number six is a resolution reviewing a currency exchange license application from Tienda Takiera Guillero Incorporated. Bree.
So we received notice, notification from the state of a currency renewal. We have to hold a public hearing for the renewal. We have not had any issues with this business, so we would recommend the approval of the license renewal for Tienda.
Very good. Thank you, Bree. Is this the only one in town? Counsel, any questions or comments for Bree?
Move to approve.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number seven, under award bidding, rewarding the bid is a resolution receiving bids for the dam riprap. Stephen.
Following the flood earlier this summer, we, that high water event and the churning energy dissipation that occurs on the downstream side of the dam caused riprap to be relocated downstream, mainly downstream of the East Side Lake Dam. There's a little bit of work needed downstream of the Cedar River Dam as well, directly downstream of each of those dams. So I met with a couple contractors, walked through what needed to be done to, to protect the, the dam itself with some additional riprap, and received two bids. Hanson Holling was the low bid at twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. This is an item in our FEMA claims package, and so we anticipate getting funding reimbursement through FEMA for this, this work. And work will begin as soon as conditions are fit. We also need to get a DNR permit for the contractor to be working in the waterway as well. So with that, I would recommend awarding this bid to Hanson Holling and Excavating.
What are they doing? What are they?
So, you, the, the energy that, that swirls on the downstream side of a dam takes the small riprap and, and pushes it up into a pile downstream of the dam. And if that riprap moved because it was too small, we're going to bring in, haul in some larger riprap. Thirty-six inch diameter type stones, very large stones, place them against the foot of the dam spillway, and then take some of that excess material that got pushed out and just distribute it downstream.
Bigger rocks. Need bigger rocks.
Bigger rocks.
Got it. All right. Any questions or comments further, counsel? Otherwise, looking for a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Under petitions and requests, item number eight requesting approval for, of the cannabis ordinance. Bree.
So as discussed at the work session, we've brought forth the proposed ordinance for regulation of cannabis businesses. Let myself or city attorney Byram know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Bree. Counsel, any questions?
A couple things. I'm going to vote against this. I, you know, I, simply because I, you know, I think I sent, forwarded a couple articles to, to some of you. One, there's still a lot of uncertainty about this from the state level, but most importantly, I think we, the, the more you read about what's going on around us, I think most, not most, a lot of municipalities that I have read about are taking a much more conservative approach to this. Specifically, you know, taking a narrower view of how many licenses are available. And I think probably the most interesting one is the city of Mankato saying, hey, we're gonna enforce a thousand-foot ordinance, or a thousand, thousand-foot preventive barrier around, was it?
Schools, daycares.
Schools and daycares. And I gotta tell you, I, the more I think about that, the, the more I like that. And I, I just want us to take a deep, and fundamentally, I don't care about this. I, I, you know, it's, it's legal, it's, I, I just think we need to be smart about it. And being smart about it says to me, hey, you gotta be, it's, it's better to start off more restrictive than it is to start out too liberal because you can always make things, you can always loosen the reins, but it's damn hard to tighten them once we set a resolution. So that's kind of where I'm at. Hopefully, we can rethink this.
What does it mean with the delay, the Ramsey County judge that delayed the application process for the, the compromised individuals or whatever? Does this, does this delay everything? Can we put this on hold?
There's a lot of uncertainty at the state level. There's a lot of moving pieces at the state level that are hard to read the tea leaves and figure out when they're gonna get their program going and, and effective and start to actually license, you know, these types of businesses. From our perspective, our advice is that we get this in place before they start that, and technically, they can start that in January. So if they were to be able to move forward on things in January, we would want to have this in place or, then all bets are off. Not that we're doing a lot of heavy regulating, as Mr. Baker pointed out, but at least we would have something in place. So we've always said, and all of the other municipalities that I've seen across the state have also taken that position. End of year is their drop dead date on getting this done. So it's either this meeting, or the next meeting, or a special meeting before the end of December that we would recommend that this get passed.
So we can follow, follow through with it, whether it's implemented or not, because there's, there's a hold on everything, that we just have this ordinance sitting out there with no real issue either way to move forward.
And at any time, once it's passed, if we see something that just really isn't working, you could come back and revisit that and loosen that, or change that, but we should get something in place before the end of the year.
You know, I, I would say to Councilmember Baker's point, I, I, I started out in the space where you're at now. I think when I heard earlier that, you know, what, to, to mirror the alcohol ordinance, I think makes good sense. I think, um, you know, whether we're too restrictive or not, I, I, I've kind of come around to, to thinking that your first blush of being business friendly and mirroring it after something that has existed, you know, alcohol, marijuana, kind of, we're on the same plane now, that that would be just a, a good model. But I, I could be swayed, because again, I started where you're at now. Counsel, questions, comments? What do you want to do?
Yeah, I guess I kind, I kind of agree with Mr. Baker, and, you know, it's easier to relax things than it is to go back and toughen them up. And reading what some of these other municipalities are doing, maybe we do want to maybe tighten things a little bit first going out of the gate. I, you know, I think for me, it just, and I'm happy to be correct if I'm wrong, but I, I read some of the stuff that's been happening in other cities, and there isn't, the state hasn't given us as a city a lot of control, right? We don't have a lot of control over if we can accept these or not, we have to. So basically, they've given us control over some zoning, like, like normal. As was mentioned, you know, we can have some, some however many feet away from other types of businesses if we want to. And then they have put a minimum, not a maximum. Well, we've already kind of gone as tight as we can on the minimum by allowing three. I believe that's, that's the least amount we can have in Austin is three. So we've already kind of gone as conservative as we can there. So I think at that, unless I'm wrong, the only thing we really could look at tweaking would be having however many feet away from a daycare or school, and I just don't, I think it just causes more headaches that we have to come and fix later, you know, because we did discuss it, I remember, pretty in depth in the work session about, you know, if the Hormel daycare is technically however many feet away from a smoke shop that most people would not consider near each other. I just don't really see a reason in delaying this. I do understand the need to get it by the first of the year. So I guess that's just where I'm at.
Thank you. Anybody else prepared a comment before we take a vote on this? If not, looking for a motion for the preparation of the ordinance as it stands?
I'd move to approve it.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second? So that motion fails for lack of a second? Is there a motion otherwise?
No, I, 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 I just, I, I think my, you know, I, I, Mike, I certainly trust your opinion on the, the count. I really would like us to throw a thousand-foot ring around certain businesses in this ordinance to make it go. I want to get it done, and I think, I think Mr. Byram's right, we got to get it done this year, but I'd get a lot more comfortable if we could have a, whatever that, whatever that number is. I'm just making up a thousand.
And, and we don't have to get this done by the end of the year. This can, we're in a holding pattern anyway. We could, we could kick it. I don't want, I don't want to rush.
I thought he said we had to, that's.
I don't want to rush on this.
If, if, if an applicant to the state agency that issues the licenses is able to be processed in January, they will contact us and ask the simple question, does this comply with your zoning ordinance? And if we have no zoning ordinance, our answer will be yes, because we don't, we haven't classified this business as anything.
Yeah. How about we do this? We've got a couple missing council members. Can we table this to the next meeting?
We have no choice.
I, I would say this.
We have any choice.
Continue it, because we've posted for, we've posted for the ordinance, so if we continue that, we won't have to post again.
Yeah, I guess that's the other issue with two members missing.
Just for some other feedback, for staff purposes, the, Mr. McKeegan, you can, Chief McKeegan, you can help me, but the thousand feet, was that, or Holly? Was that within the school, from the high school? The downtown would be intersected by that thousand feet, I think it was.
I'd have to look at the map again.
Right.
To verify, but I did want to note that we do require conditional use permit for each license type, which would be a review through planning commission. It wouldn't go to council again, but it's just another hoop to jump through that could require some additional, uh, you know, just some additional requirements if there were concerns about the neighboring properties potentially. I mean, it wouldn't necessarily allow us to do a buffer, but there could be some screening or something like that.
And I think part of what we're looking for from a staff perspective is, do we want to take the most exclusionary standpoint, which we certainly can? But are we, are we looking more of a scalpel approach that we would still try to look for ways where there would be logical business development, say in the downtown, that so instead of a thousand feet, it would be six hundred feet or something? If, if counsel could give a little bit of direction on that, do we want to take more of an exclusionary approach, or as we look at these different setbacks that we could employ, we could still maintain some business accommodation while still trying to accommodate the, I'll call it interference between some of those other entities?
Well, we're only talking about two, right? Two or, is it two or three in the city?
Three, three.
Three.
Because we're over twenty-five thousand, we have to have three.
I bet we could. I don't, no offense, but I, I don't think that a thousand-foot exclusion that would dip into the downtown area because of the high school would necessarily cause a real hardship. If you're, you know, if you're talking about twenty, that would be one thing, but if you're only talking about three max, I don't, I don't chief, I'm kind of winging it here.
Only just to clarify, maybe this is more from Mr. Byram and Holly, you know, it's, it's schools, daycare, you know, things of that nature. So, so we talked about the high school, but I think we have a daycare at the church between the high school and the downtown. And so suddenly, your, your zone gets a lot closer to the downtown. I, we'll, we'll look to find it. I believe when we were doing this with the county and both looking at it, I believe they gave us a GIS map with maybe a thousand and three hundred ringed out.
Yeah.
That for everyone to look at, and I could certainly try to find that again, but I think they based it both on schools and both their registration of licensed daycares in town to draw that, that circle map with the, with the exclusionary zones. And I think a thousand and three hundred were the two that they had drafted out for review. I have one question for Mr. Byram on something like this. So if, you know, in the next year, we're gonna have, let's say, at least two or three of these places up and running, and if we have an exclusionary zone, and somebody decides they want to open like a home-based daycare that happens to be within however many feet of that establishment that already has the cannabis license, would the daycare then still allowed to be permitted, or would they be denied?
Yes, ordinarily, it's first come, first served, so existing daycares and existing schools would create those zones. If you have a licensed business in its location and someone comes in and wants to put a daycare into that zone, then that would be a reason to tell them no.
Okay. See, and that's why for me, I don't want to have a, an exclusionary. I just don't see a reason to. We don't have them for alcohol, which again, as I've said before, is kind of how I'm looking at this. I just fear there's some unintended consequences, and I don't really see the positive benefits of doing so.
Yeah, residency restrictions are tough. I know when I worked in the sex offender business, those are, that's just an untenable situation. This is certainly different. I like the idea of modeling it. I think we could hang our hat on that. Good public policy is to kind of model that for something that's been working, and I think the alcohol certainly has worked more. We have more than three liquor stores. I know that. So I have come to support what we've had and, and what we've agreed upon with the, no, no restrictions on the thousand feet and such. There was something else in the Mankato paper, I believe, that said, you know, that does create some winners and losers on who gets to sell the property to the business owner, and prices get inflated when they're limited to certain spaces away. All of a sudden, the warehouse out a thousand feet from anywhere gets, gets to name their price, and gets to be a little bit usury. Craig?
Just want to point out some procedural issues, just so everyone's aware of where this might go. Our charter says that to approve an ordinance, if, on the first meeting where it's considered, there's a requirement of unanimous vote with at least five members of the council present. So you have five tonight. If you had unanimous vote, this could be passed tonight and would be completed. The statute and the, and the charter require that we post a copy of it or make it available to the public so that you can get public feedback. This would be a material change, because it would really change, I, I think in the minds of some of the folks in Austin who are interested in maybe pursuing these licenses, whether they will or will not be negatively impacted by this. So I would think we would have to post a new copy and sort of start the process over with this addition, which means the next meeting would be, the first meeting where that ordinance would be considered, and it would require unanimous vote with at least five members present. If doesn't happen then, it can't be approved until the meeting after that, where a majority vote will approve it. So I just wanted to lay out those steps for whatever that's worth. If we consider these changes, we need to have our ducks in a row to even have it done at the first meeting in January.
Well, right now, I read the tea leaves that say we don't have unanimity.
Right.
So it, next.
But if this version was voted no by a couple of people and voted yes by three people, it could move to the next meeting where it could be approved by a majority vote. If changes are to be made, we start again with the first meeting next time.
I, I haven't heard any negative public feedback on this ordinance, as it, as it was a dra, draft. And, and were other council members, have you heard anything from the public on, hey, that's too restrictive, or it's not restrictive enough? I haven't heard any of it. It seems like it has come and gone.
Other issues of publications, Harold only publishes Wednesdays and Saturdays. It's probably too late for us tomorrow to get into Wednesday, which means it wouldn't hit till the seventh of December, which means we don't have the ten-day notice posting ahead of time. Is it ten days?
Let's not make, let's not make procedure drive good policy. Appreciate all your saying, but I think we're not to a point where we're in agreement yet.
Well, we can, again, the, the Office of Cannabis Management is not real organized right now, and there's a lot of delay.
No, that's a very pleasant way of saying it.
Well, I think there's, I think there's, there's some room to delay this a little bit, because we, they're not in a hurry, and we, neither should we, so I guess at this point, we.
Just like it on the work session on the sixteenth, just to talk about it. We won't publish any changes as is, and we'll just start in January on it. Is that kind of the thoughts?
I think that's fair.
So do we need to table this or continue it?
Or?
We're mad we got to republish it, so.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the, the map that I did get is three hundred feet only. That's the one I can find. I don't think I have a thousand. If, if we're to consider the thousand, you want to see it, I'd probably have to go back to the county and see if they can generate that particular map. I know just in looking at the three hundred, I don't have a way to bring it up. The, the thousand would take the downtown out pretty, pretty immediate. I mean, it would, it would take out most of Austin. Three hundred may looks to be in there, but when we discussed it, like you said, I think the YMCA is a restricted area. The high school, but the church, it's like you said, the map I have and can send out is three hundred feet. Folks want a thousand, I would probably have to approach the county and see if they'd be willing to plot map that out as well.
I think they included all options, including like parks as well as exclusionary zones. I mean, you can include or not include whatever you want, but is there any guidance on that? I mean, would they, would you want to include parks, or should we do a map with no?
Well, I think there might be an appetite to still leave it as it is too. I, I.
Okay, sure.
I think it's still wide open. I am in support of the way it's drafted now, but there's certainly council members that don't agree with that, so.
We might be able to bring a, a live version of the map to click on different scenarios if possible.
Let's put it on that work session then.
Sure.
So we'll do it, we'll not publish, and we'll just start pulling them basically on the sixteenth.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on to item number nine, a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five fee schedule. Bree.
So this is just a resolution setting the fees for our miscellaneous business operations. We are requesting your approval on this.
Counsel, any questions or looking for a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five fee schedule?
How many times do we collect ten dollars for animal adoption?
For the cat and dog licenses?
No, there's an animal adoption fee of ten dollars.
Okay.
On the first page. Do we actually do that? And yeah, while you're at it, what do we?
That.
What do you think the percentage of cat and dogs are licensed?
Um, we do do quite a few dog and cat licenses, and a lot of landlords are now requiring those.
Okay.
People to come in and do that. As far as animal adoptions, that's more on the police side from the pound.
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I don't think it is a lot. I know for dogs that are going out, we do try to get those to the Humane Society and let them adopt it out. So I, I can inquire. I don't think it's a whole lot. Our, our preference is, is to move them out if possible, hence a lower fee if that accomplishes that, even no fee. That is the ultimate goal, is to adopt them out. But I think since we've had the partnership with the Humane Society, I don't think we are viewed as a, a, a place of adoption, so I don't think we deal with that fee very much at all.
Well, I, I know it's a petty discussion, and I know Fisher's about to start rolling his eyes and throwing, throwing shit at me. But to me, a fee should have, create a public purpose or defer a cost that we would normally not otherwise incur. So I'm just curious if things like animal, do we really need an animal adoption fee, I guess is my question? If we have, if we have no mechanism or intention to really enforce it, I'm, I'm just curious.
I guess I thought maybe the ten dollar, ten dollar fee came off the adoption fee the Humane Society charges, but this is a standalone city fee, not part of the Humane Society's fee for adoption.
Correct.
All right. We're getting all but the ten dollar adoption, we're eliminating the animal adoption.
I would move to approve without the animal adoption fee if you're, if the cat license business is good.
Anybody want to discuss that further, or just go with it? Any, any other? All right. So with the removal of the animal adoption of ten dollar, looking for a motion of that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Item number ten, motion approving the T-hanger lease agreement template. Stephen.
Counsel previously discussed rates for the T-hanger units and just approved them in that last item. So before you tonight is a lease agreement that was drafted with assistance of the city attorney's office for us to take out and go down our list of interested parties and develop lease agreements with them. Uh, we've, we've left the document to be a bit open in that we're encouraging long-term leases. So it, we're not set on a specific time period, but rather, we are encouraging longer-term leases to give both the tenant and ourselves security and, and revenue. So, uh, that's, that's the main gist of it. We would designate a specific unit out of the ten units for, for, um, the lease to an individual owner. They will lease out the space for a period of time. They will be responsible for, uh, electrical costs to the unit. We, we do plan, not shown in this document, but we do plan to include that the, the leasee will be responsible for uh, any taxes that the county may invoke on this. We're anticipating that there may be some taxes as part of this, so we'll include that language, that, that is the leasee's responsibility. But otherwise, I'd open it up to counsel for any questions. Otherwise, we're requesting approval to allow staff to start moving this forward.
Stephen, so the two percent, and I understand you want to go for the long term. The two percent, like, is that in perpetuity only at two percent? Like, if somebody has, you know, is in there for twenty years, is that all goes up every, I, I just, is there room for us to change that in the future if we need to?
The two percent is in the miscellaneous fees that you just approved. So I would say the two percent would last for the term of whatever lease this person signs. And then when they go to sign a new lease, the percentage is based on whatever the two percent has increased in the miscellaneous fees based on council direction in the future. Does that, does that make sense?
I think so. So what's the, how long do you anticipate some of these leases would be for?
I don't have a maximum.
What's the, what's the average right now? Where do they lease them right now? Ten years?
We, eh, no such thing right now.
Really?
The last T-hangers were built in nineteen forty, so there's no lease agreements there. Many of our, uh, we have some. We, we lease out the ground that, um, people build their own hanger on. And again, a lot of times, those are long-term leases because they want, they, they're building a structure on our land, so they want security that they're gonna have it for a period of time. So those will be fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year leases for those types of things. This will be our first T-hanger experience. So if you have direction that it should be a, no more than a certain length, then we can incorporate that.
I don't have any issue. I don't know. Anybody else? Anybody have any issue? Longest is that they want to write it?
No, whatever they want to, you know, if you can lock them in for twenty-five years, do it.
I have no, no problem with it. All right. Any other discussion on the approving the T-hanger lease template?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eleven, approving the twenty twenty-five Hormel Foundation Grant Awards. Tom.
The Hormel Foundation Grant Awards were released la, last week, and in total, the city had all but one of their projects funded. Couple of them were partially funded. Two hundred and fifty grand for Emerald Ashbore removal planting instead of the four hundred thousand we requested. Fourth of July was reduced back to the twenty-three thousand, which we've had in the past couple of years. And Nature Center education programs was reduced from fifty to forty-five thousand, which has been the past couple of years. However, everything else was funded, including nine hundred thousand dollars for another affordable housing project, similar to first and third apartments. And then down below, quality of life, seventy-three thousand, two fifty-three is approved for us to pass through to the Art Center for Operations and Rent Sport there. and rent support there. In addition to that, three million, six hundred and seventy thousand will pass through the city of Austin for renovation of the paramount, some handicap accessible bathrooms and some, um, additional, um, areas in the back for dressing rooms, et cetera. All in all, five point, five million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars will be coming to the city of Austin in twenty twenty-five.
Excellent. Certainly thank the Hormel Foundation for their benevolence to the city of Austin over the years and this year is no different. My goodness, it's, uh, any community would be a joy to have something like this and we appreciate them.
I think in total over twenty-six million went to this year for twenty twenty-five.
Outstanding. Very good. Thank you, Tom. Council, any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor. And then next year we'll do a budget amendment to incorporate these into the budget that are.
Thank you. Item number twelve is resolution approving a release of easement. Tom?
Austin Utilities, uh, is in the process, or, I'm sorry, Austin Medical Center is in the process of selling the Mayo Eye Clinic, uh, back behind nineteen-ten. Um, and evidently there is an easement. The Austin Utilities was able to get through the city of Austin for electrical line running basically right through the building before they expanded it. Uh, they're in the process of selling that and have asked the city to release this easement. We've worked with Mr. Byram, um, to come up with a resolution to allow the release of that easement so that building can be sold free and clear.
Excellent. Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Looking for a resolution?
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you. Tom, item number thirteen is resolution approving our local option sales tax collection agreement. Tom?
We are in, I believe this will be our third, um, uh, amended, uh, sales tax agreement. State of Minnesota administers local option sales tax for ninety-nine percent of the cities in Minnesota that have a local option sales tax. On a regular basis, they go through and do a calculation of their costs. So they get, because they get reimbursed out of local option sales tax in comparison to the revenue coming in. Um, a couple of years ago, they reduced our fee, um, down to a flat, to one point three-five percent of our lost collections. The last legislative session, they passed a, a statute that will require a charge, a flat rate of up to one percent going forward. Um, that way it's now actually being reduced even more because they are getting enough dollars in to cover their costs. Department of Revenue has indicated that it'll be point nine percent for the city of Austin for the foreseeable future. Um, but with that requires a new sales tax agreement for the state of Minnesota to administer it for us. So based on this, again, our costs will actually be going down, which means more revenue for the local option sales tax. Certainly answer any questions.
What's the, what's the number on that? Four point four or five percent? Say, we, we gain what, almost a half a percent?
Probably about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand.
On our, we're getting a million two a year?
We're getting about two million a year these days. It's, unfortunately, it's flat over the last couple of years, but it's still, it'd be close to two million.
That's awesome.
And how many years do we have left?
It expires March thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven at the latest, unless we end it early, when all projects are financed, et cetera.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number fourteen is resolution requesting feasibility report for twenty-twenty-five reconstruction projects. Stephen.
Uh, before you is our list of s- reconstruction projects, uh, that involve assessments. So part of the feasibility process is to, uh, this is the first step in our process for twenty twenty-five. We have seven street reconstruction projects identified there before you and would request approval, uh, or a request for feasibility reports on these projects.
Very good. Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number fifteen is a, a motion granting the planning of the zoning department the power to contract the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location, five oh-three, east of the Wakefield property. Need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. On to citizens addressing the council. Is there any citizens here wishing to speak to the council? Hearing none, seeing none. Honorary council member, Cindy, any comments on the first meeting?
No comments on the first one.
Well, thank you for joining us. Looking forward to five more meetings, I'm sure. Uh, honorary councilman reports recommendations.
Uh, yeah, uh, Mia Eckert was at our last meeting that had a, a violation for a parked car. Um, they were instructed to talk with Holly about that if they had any concern. Just wanted to let council know that they did not take us up on that, so we've just proceeded forward in that regard. So just wanted to share that.
Thanks for the update. Appreciate that.
Mr. Dankert.
Tom?
Friendly reminder, Wednesday, December fourth, truth and taxation. I know we've had two council members will be gone already, so hopefully everybody else can be there.
You're good.
How many do you need to not be here?
I need all five of you to be here.
What?
I need all five of you to be here. Or four, or four for a quorum, but five would be.
Not feeling good already.
I feel like another coming on.
What? I do, yeah, big, yeah.
Joyce, what do you have? Anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Got it. Paul?
Nothing, your honor.
Nothing, your honor.
Yeah.
Uh, tell me again, Tim, we, I sent you an email about it.
Donovan.
Tim Donovan.
Tia.
And Tia, that's it. Um, yeah, I sent a quick note to Steve and, um, Holly today. I had to, I had a contract. I'm, got a house remodel going on and went to the, went through the process of applying for a permit. Um, and wa- just had a spectacular, I mean, that my first experience was terrible. My s- my talking to the people upstairs was spectacular. I mean, what a cool, I just, I, I, you know, every once in a while you run into a couple people that really, really care and really know their jobs. And, uh, it was just fun, fun to learn, fun to talk to them and, uh, well done, really well done.
Very good. Thank you. Mike?
A couple of things. Um, you know, it's the holiday season here, so, uh, there's a lot going on in town. Uh, want to thank the Austin Enhancement Group for the hometown Christmas kickoff that we had last weekend. I wasn't able to get there, but I heard it was well attended and, uh, Santa made a visit. I know there's the Merry Tubah Christmas this Saturday. There's honestly something going on all the time. Uh, as you've heard, my annual holiday tradition is to have Tom give us a presentation at the truth and taxation meeting. Um, you are welcome to find yours. There's lots of things to celebrate the holidays happening in Austin. Please check out Discover Austin. They've got a great list of all of them and we will see you downtown and around the city.
Thank you, Mike. I just want to read the December anniversaries. We, top of the heap here, Dave McKeegan, guess how many years? Holy cow, it's been twenty-seven with APD. Derek Ellis, Police Department, ten years. Craig Clark, ten years. Fred Huesmoller, ten, ten years with the building department. Bria, wel- welcome to three-year anniversary. Uh, Meredith Maloney, Nature Center, two years. Jesse Betts, police officer, two years. Tia Andre, does nice work according to, uh, Mr. Baker and we know what she does up there for celebrating her first year in service. And Jason, I can't believe it's been a year already, our correct director. So congratulations and thanks for all these, all the wonderful work that the city staff do, do those are the December anniversaries. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn to our Monday, December sixteenth meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.